I'll call the Planning Commission to order for October 20th, 2025. And we'll begin with roll call, please.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Um, Casco.
Here.
Dolan.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Sis.
Here.
I'll present.
All right, now, like Lori Barron said, if you could and if you already haven't, please sign in in the back. Thank you again for being here and good evening, everyone. I'd like to officially call this Planning Commission public hearing to order. Thank you for all being here and for participating in this important process. Tonight, we are here to consider the conditional use permit application for the establishment of the maternity home within the residential and agricultural district located at 333 South Lake Street, the vacant church rectory. This proposal touches both land uses and considerations and the broader values of our community, compassion, support, and responsible development. As always, our goal is to ensure that any decision that is made reflects careful balance between the needs of the applicant, the right to neighboring property owners, and a long-term vision for our community. We welcome the public input, encourage respectful consideration, and dialogue throughout this hearing. At this point, I'll turn it over to our Planning Commission Secretary to present the village codified ordinance that relate to the paternity homes.
Okay, 1129.02 definition maternity home is a residential care facility operated by a not-for-profit organization that provides care and support services for single pregnant women, including up to two of their children. During pregnancy and for a period not to exceed 24 months postpartum, support services shall be for residents only and shall not include onsite medical care. Ordinance 1133.05 agricultural residence residential district allows maternity home, and that would be under C14. Ordinance 1165.09 conditions for specific uses. Why maternity homes? One, the facility shall be limited to not more than six women and their children at any one time. Two, the facility shall provide 24 onsite staffing. Three, the facility shall submit a security plan to the village approved by the chief of police and council. Four, the facility shall provide training, educational, and support services to the women. Five, the facility shall complete an annual fire inspection. Six, the facility's conditional use permit must be reviewed every two years.
Thank you so much. Now, the Cornerstone Pregnancy Services CEO Cynthia Carter Harris will now present the proposed project. Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
For inviting us and giving us the opportunity to share with you about our maternity home and the project that Cornerstone is considering and has approached this committee to consider with the conditional use permit. Maternity homes, the purpose is to provide that support to mothers, to strengthen families, and to help women as they transform their futures. I wanted to just really stress what a maternity home is. It's not a a emergency housing facility. It is a program that that houses participants for a specified amount of time. It provides a safe and stable residential environments for expected mothers in crises. And as we look at the research throughout Lorain County, we know that we do have a housing insecurity issue with homelessness individuals who are expecting and those who are not. And this maternity home will provide shelter, structure, and support during her pregnancy and early parenting. And many maternity homes are often faith-based in community-supported programs. And Cornerstone is faith-based, and we do have a reputation of four years of interfacing with the community. We have collaborations with many of the social agencies within Lorain County. So why do maternity homes matter? Thousands of women face homelessness and unsafe housing during pregnancy. If you were to to read the recent report that was collaborated with Mercy Hospital and Lorain County Health Department, you would read that 67 to 69% of women indicated that housing insecurity was a big issue that they had. And we have difficulty making, you know, their rental payments. And residents who have come to us within Lorain County have indicated that we have dealt with women who have been homeless and were pregnant. One, one of the cases that we worked diligently with in the county trying to find this mother some place to live. She had delivered and had a newborn. And it's difficult for us to even fathom that a mother could live in a tent or in her car with a newborn. It's puts that child's life at risk. So maternity homes provide stable housing. They reduce health risks and improve outcomes. Many of the maternity homes are are built as programs to help women gather the skills that they need, help them to become more secure, teaching them life skills, budgeting, how to really handle their monies so that they can have a more secure future. And here's a fact, women experiencing homelessness are twice as likely to deliver preterm babies, which then burdens the healthcare system even more. About our maternity home, the proposed site is at the nativity of the Blessed Virgin Mary, right down the street. And our planned launch is sometime in 2026 or the first or second quarter of 2027. Who will we serve? We will serve women who are over 18. So it is, that is our target market. Many of the clients will have one, maybe one child, or this may be their first pregnancy. They are generally women who, as I indicated, they they are having these housing, this housing insecurity because their income is low. And they're they're pregnant. What will we offer at through our maternity home? It will be a residential program for six women and their babies at a time. We will do a screening for the admittance into the program. We we do not plan to have any active substance abuse. There was recently a home that was launched within the last week or two in Columbia Station that will deal and house specifically women who had who were in recovery. That is not a market. So we don't plan to house women who have a current history of domestic violence. There there are establishments throughout the county that will help women in that regard. Or as we vet our participants, we will, we will look at their their background. We'll do a background check. We plan to have staff 24/7, 365 days, a year. It's a year-long stay. It's a very extensive program, program that will have a case manager, you know, a program, services staff that will help our clients identify gaps in their lives, develop goals and similar goals, because we're about life transformation. We want to help them transform their lives. And we will make community referrals. Here are some statistics based in here in Lorain County as we look at factors like the shortage of affordable housing, which impacted Lorain County in 2023, contributed to housing instability, and the vulnerable groups were women who were pregnant. They were among that group that was surveyed. Research also points to the high incidence of domestic violence and poverty as major drivers of homelessness for women. And when women have the the crisis of a pregnancy, it further exacerbates those issues for them. And so we want to provide women with with an option to know that they do not have to consider us issues like abortion because they don't have policy, that we can have a maternity home that will help them. So affordable housing remains a major issue in Lorain County. Many residents rely on temporary shelters, but these only provide short-term relief and do not address the long-term housing crisis. This is what was identified in Lorain County's health assessment in 2023. And what we propose is that we we help clients to become more stable as they go through our program. The estimate of 178 people includes both those in shelters and those living in unsheltered conditions in Lorain County. And we know that there is a waiting list for individuals who are seeking the shelter. We've had to work with clients who were on a waiting list and those who are becoming very anxious because they were nearing the time that they would deliver. And what will they do? If they, if there's an option that we can provide here with with the maternity homes, then I think that will help stabilize some of our residents and our community. Lorain County does not have specialized proposals like the maternity home. You know, thank God that recently, you know, the Trinity House has just been launched in Columbia Station. So as we provide services for women who have substance abuse and they are in recovery, there is now a resource in our county that will help these women. However, when we look at equitable maternity homes, I can find maternity homes in Cuyahoga County. We don't have any here on Lorain County. And that was one reason why our board has determined that we will look and investigate whether or not we can address this issue. A maternity home is more than just a place to stay. It's a safe, structured, nurturing, nourishing environment where expected mothers receive guidance, resources, and support to overcome the challenges that led to their homelessness. And it helps them to build a foundation for stable and transformed future, not only for themselves, but for their children. And when children are able to grow up in a secure home environment, it really helps to impact their lives. They do better than school. It empowers mothers for stability and growth. It will help them access, give them access to consistent prenatal and medical care. Their case manager will help make sure that they stay on the path of receiving and going to their medical appointments. Not only does it help that mother with her health, it also helps to make sure that there are better prenatal outcomes. And therefore, as we collaborate with, like Lorain County Health Department, our focus is to to decrease the negative prenatal outcomes and that women could face if not, if they didn't receive prenatal medical care. Life skills, they will receive that. They will receive parenting education and financial education through our program. And they will have a pathway. This produces a pathway for sustainable independence. And the stronger that we can help family units, especially especially single mother units, become more stable, then we know the environment will be more conducive for children. It produces healthier beginnings for infants. We will see reduced rates of preterm birth and low birth rate because of that case management intervention. Better maternal bonding and attachment because they learn a parenting skill. And we have been providing parenting education for over 40 years through Cornerstone Pregnancy Services. We're one of the referral units for the Lorain City, Lorain County Family Court. They'll send the parents to our parenting programs. Mothers will find better access to pediatric care and developmental support because now they are developing better skills at managing their own health. They will manage their their children's health better. Healthy mothers nurture healthy children and healthy communities. It will strengthen communities through support. Maternity homes have shown to reduce public health costs and dependence on welfare systems because she teaches mothers another way to live. It encourages volunteerism and community service, promotes collaboration between health, social, and faith sectors, and it breaks the cycle of poverty and instability. That's what we're looking for, transformation. Beyond birth, it's it's a foundation for a future. The mothers graduate and transition to stable housing and employment. We will intersect and have relationships with with the programs that will help with job stability for them and vocational training. So they'll continue their education, will help mothers who who decide that, yes, I want to go to to get my GED. Some of our clients haven't graduated from high school, not because they didn't have the desire, but they, there was a lack of encouragement for them. Improve the improved family reunification rates because the parenting helps them develop better skills. And then the generational impact of restored confidence and stability. You, as again, as I stated, you're teaching a mother a new way to live. You help her transform her paradigm for what she thinks her future is in the U.K. Lives are changed by maternity housing. Here were some of the comments of women who have gone through maternity housing programs. This home gave me the space to breathe, grow, and believe again. I learned how to care for myself and my baby and dream for my future. It's a place of hope and a future of possibility. Every mother deserves a safe place to prepare for a new life coming into her life. And together, we create pathways from crisis to competence. It's it's a partnership with community. And so I invite the community of South Amherst to to join us in supporting, to support our mission to care for women beyond pregnancy in a caring and transformational maternity home program. And as we make the difference, the project will be the first maternity home modeled in our region. It will be supporting local efforts to reduce homelessness in Lorain County. This maternity home project will reduce the amount of time a pregnant woman has to wait for a safe place to live, learn, and become empowered to change. Cornerstone Pregnancy Services, as I stated, we have a 40-year history of caring for women, of being a partner in the community. And so we do have strong partnerships with churches and with parishes and with organizations and community agencies. And at this time, I invite, if you have any questions you'd like to ask.
Yes, we'll open it up to the the panel here and then also our safety forces, and then we'll we'll go to public comment after. So anybody like to ask? Thank you, by the way, Ms. Cynthia Harris. Anybody have any questions?
Actually, I do. So can you share with us the vetting process for your residents?
Yes, residents will generally be referred from the Cornerstone Pregnancy Services and from social agencies. We receive a lot of our referrals from, you know, Lorain County Health Department and other organizations that that work with us and partner with us in that regard. And so a client will be referred, or they can refer themselves, and they will fill an online application out. And then we will call them in, have have an interview with clients, and do some screening assessments. We'll do a depression screening assessment and ask some vetting questions to find out exactly what their history is.
So you're gonna, you're gonna lean on their honesty for this vetting as far as whether they are, they experienced domestic violence or drug abuse in the past?
And they will then give referrals, you know, recommendations. Then three recommendations will be required for them to to attend. And generally, when a social worker refers the mother to our programs, they always send over a case file of review. So that we know exactly what is happening.
And where do those, the referrals are going to originate from agencies alone?
Some agencies. Some agencies, as I stated, they will come from some agencies. It can come from a church. It 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 could come from um Johnson Family Services. It it could come from the homeless shelter itself. If they find that they're they have a crisis situation with a woman who's pregnant and um they understand that we do have the capacity, then we more likely will give referrals as well.
Okay. And as far as visitors go, um I read through some of the the information you guys sent over to us. When when you're allowing visitors to access the facility, you have people that are at risk. Um you really don't know too much about the background of your visitors coming in. So is there a a surgical program that you guys use? Um do you guys search the individuals coming to the property? What does that experience look like?
We we don't actually search the person who's coming in. We we indicate that as our signs will be posted, we do not allow firearms on our premises. And so if a client wants a visitor to say, for instance, and it is her the the father for a child to visit her, she will have to submit a request prior to that so we can do a background check on the person and and also do our vetting of of that particular person before they are allowed on premises.
Okay. And again, with the visitors, what does that background look like?
It will be a background check that we that we would search the county records and then and the state records with that person giving us the the authorization to do a criminal background check.
Okay. And when the visit takes place in the facility, um do you isolate those parties from the rest of the the residents? Or is it done in like a general area where everybody has access to everybody else?
There there will be an offsetting area where it's generally open so that staff can observe uh in that particular process. But that person can visit them in a public type space, but no one else will be in that space with them, although visiting, although they have visitors. And and generally, we can restrict visitors uh coming into the property. And as I indicated, the the resident will have to submit it up to a week ahead of time to give us an opportunity to do a background check on the person. And they will know that we're gonna do a background.
Okay. When somebody becomes a resident there, um are they required to stay there every night while they reside there, or can they?
They're required to stay there every night. There may be particular guidelines that they will have to agree to and sign off on. And and as I stated, it's a program, so it's structured. If the client decides that they do not want to to go through the program and they do not want to follow the guidelines, then they will be discharged.
Question I have about your staff. Um because right here it says shall not include on-site medical care. So are your staff members trained to some level of clinical care? Uh being these women, you know, they have young children, possibly they're even pregnant. Uh what is your?
Our our staff will go through uh first aid and training. Um and um just generally like our staff now are are do go through first aid and and um training. So we have an online process. And and uh on, we have to understand this is residential and the center where we are located is a medical center. So on on our premises in Elyria, we do have medical staff.
Right. But the staff here would be
They will they will be
lower level training?
They're not medical professionals. They will have first aid and and uh emergency type situations. They will be trained on if this happens, this is what you do. So they will have set protocols that they will follow.
So will those protocols perhaps be uh discussed with the fire department since we do provide medical response?
Absolutely.
So that's my my thinking is we want to know who we're dealing with because we have two group homes that we go to. And it's, you know, kind of per kind of important for us to know, you know, is is the staff gonna be able to help us? Is the staff gonna be, you know, just standing there? So?
Well, well, the staff will be um uh, you know, trained to to assess a situation and know when medical intervention is required and and call nine one one and and, you know, get the help the person needs. If first aid needs to to be done or CPR, they're they're going to be trained in CPR so they can start a CPR process. You don't have to be a medical professional.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, um one other question. So is your facility set up to where if you have an incident with one of your residents um that somehow winds up with drugs? Uh do you have a sus- a protocol that you would send these people away somewhere else so that they're not allowed to stay here? Because here again, you know, our medical people would have to be responding to a medical emergency that could be an overdose, and that's kind of important for us is that if we have a facility that, you know, it's gonna be right here. You know, not that we know going anywhere, but if there's a chance that this is something, then?
Yeah, as I stated in our presentation, we do not, it's not our plan to to um house individuals who have to uh treat their issues. If if the our our residents or participants will be drug screened initially when they come, when when they uh sign up to come in and they are accepted into our program, and there will be periodic drug screens that we will do.
Okay.
And if one is found to uh be using drugs, we're, this is not the facility for them. They will be discharged.
Right, okay. And obviously, according to here, you'll be doing, going through an annual fire inspection. So and then one of the things that we suggest is possibly have your staff go through some sort of fire extinguisher training?
Absolutely. Our staff currently goes through
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Um I just have a couple of questions. Will the women who are there be working? Are they gonna be with you to, you know, twenty four seven?
If if those individuals, uh they may find internships that that they can. But most of of the women that will probably, it depends on what their home is. If their plan is to, that they they want to be educated, if we can get them involved in LCC or or joint vocational, then they will take classes and will be off the premises for that particular time. It it will be structured in part of their whole life.
Do they have, these women, will they have vehicles? Are they, are you providing transportation for them if they're all going offsite and taking them, picking them up? Is there a stat level of control?
They will not generally have vehicles
Okay.
that they're driving. And we will, we will uh make accommodations for them. But there is a, you know, the county has local transit. Uh most of the women have uh medic, if they have Medicaid, they have fifteen uh rides that they can utilize in that system. And and as we play, you know, look toward the future, and more likely, we will have a residential vehicle.
Okay. And then you mentioned that they may have children or one child possibly. Is are you getting limited to having one child if they?
One child is
And the pregnant?
Yeah.
Okay, um if that child is of school age, will they be going to school here within the system?
They will be going to school, yes.
Okay. And the um are there instances where you have women that would be returning? Um, you know, you've had a a woman here who's pregnant. She's eighteen years old. She's pregnant. She graduates from your program, but eventually, two years from now, would you allow them to come back if the situation were?
I think you have to take that by a case by case basis. Our our goal is sustainability. So, you know, we're we're going to be working toward that particular goal. That is the reason why their program will be structured to meet their needs and will individualize it to base management. Because, you know, the ultimate goal is that we create stability. That that's what the program
So do you have follow up then after they leave you?
Some some of the residents and some of the programs that that um I am familiar with do have uh what they call their individuals that that graduate. They they are alumni, and they will come and encourage the other women because their lives have been transformed and they are successful.
And you also mentioned there was a year long stay. Is it possible?
It could be.
It could be longer or could be longer than that? Okay. Is do you have a maximum amount of time you allow them to stay there?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months? Okay.
That's all I have right now.
Okay, um what is the ratio of caseworkers to clients?
We we plan to have uh one caseworker to start. And and um so I think uh one to six ratios.
Okay, um with the current plans that you um sent in in September, there shows seven bedrooms, but only six can be used. Has that been revised in the plans?
We revised it because, yes, we have, because that was a stipulation from commission.
Okay.
You can only have six.
Because we haven't seen like a new one yet. What about on the bedroom on the second floor southwest corner that um does not have a closet?
That will have a closet.
Okay, um the commission also um was concerned about the shared bathrooms, which initially, when we met, it was supposed to be one bathroom per suite.
Well, most maternity homes uh either have a communal bathroom. They have one large bathroom on, you know, if you have six bedrooms downstairs, they would have one communal. And they use uh the bathrooms as a life skill to help the the mothers as they to learn how to clean and and keep their home. And when, you know, between having bathrooms between two bedrooms, it is a common practice with maternity homes. And, you know, I I haven't seen a maternity home that has had individual bathrooms for each of the their residential areas.
Um is it going to be, is the home only for Lorain County?
Yeah, those are the decisions.
Okay.
So it, you said the bathrooms, the communal bathrooms. And is there anybody that kind of oversees this, that kind of sees to it that they're kept up in?
The program manager, that would be their responsibility to make sure that the the mothers will will have um housing um tasks that are assigned to them. It it may be this week is this person's task to keep the kitchen tight. Or they they would be checking off on these uh skill sets to make sure that they follow through um because this is a a shared uh residential community.
Sure.
Yeah. And so we're we're teaching transformational life skills to to our residents. And so it's like, okay, once you're off on your own, you have to maintain your house. You have to clean daily. So let's establish some of those practices now. So if if they make sure they can keep up.
There's just three of us in our house, and sometimes that gets to be. Um uh one other question, uh like security. So is there gonna be cameras that are on the public area on the outside? How are they getting in key entry?
They would.
Okay. And I think that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh really nice presentation. Thank you. Um so I have two questions. So the first is, you know, obviously you had noted that this is really the first of this format in Lorain County. Um in like Cuyahoga County or surrounding areas, what's the average age of the mothers and and maybe even their subsequent children that are coming in with them? What's that that those averages look like?
And I think it depends on where mark they are structured. Um some of the homes, it it is generally, we see within childbearing ages, eighteen to about thirty five. Um that's generally what what the age range is. Um I've seen um some homes, um you know, in in Cleveland that uh, you know, have women who maybe, you know, this woman is forty and for some reason, here she is in a crisis situation, lost her home. And and most of those women who are working are one paycheck away, you know, from being in a situation where they
Yeah.
Uh all of us are really. Um and then my second question is, obviously, we love South Amherst because we live here. Uh if we didn't, well, some of us love it more than others, but for the most part, we all love the village of South Amherst, right? So like, what were some of the determining factors that, um you know, Cornerstone and the diocese said South Amherst is the place that we want to call our home and and potentially have these women um have at their home as well?
And I I think as Cornerstone made a decision and at our our annual spring fundraiser being announced that, you know, you want to start a maternity home. And um individuals who knew Cornerstone and and also knew of a this community understood that there was a a potential for a a rectory uh for Cornerstone. And so Father Tim reached out to me and and I came to see the rectory. And just the place where it's located, you know, when we're looking for individuals to be meditative about their life, this is the perfect community to do that and and for the person can can rest and restore and and think about the possibility of your future. And and it's, you know, I I just think that having a community such as this and with such a supportive uh faith community that's right on your premises, it it just, it it was just right chemistry and right relationship. Yes. Thank you.
I really appreciate the presentation. Very informative. Um I got a couple of questions. How many total staff members do you anticipate having in your home?
There will probably be um about six uh staff members there. There will be a a director, a program director, a uh case manager. And there then will be three um shift leaders who who will help manage the the organization, the the home.
Correct. Will the case manager be the case, the same as the caseworker? That be one for the sixth?
Right, to help people be connected with services.
Um will there be additional staff as needed to help with the needs of the children? With infants?
We we will have a volunteer corps as well, a large training volunteer corps.
And with the, would this be the first uh of its type here in Lorain County? Um do you have plans to expand and have additional maternity homes?
As the Lord will.
Yes.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
First off, Cynthia, thank you.
Thanks.
For your force, you're familiar with yourself, your resume, very impressive, presentation was great. Yeah, thank you. Cynthia took one of my questions for the women who are doing an internship or or a new job. Just wanted to make sure there would be a support system for those children maybe living on that one. So I believe you've answered that. Only other question I have is a discrepancy on the guest policy summary. It says guests must be approved in advance, submit request twenty four hours ahead. You mentioned as early as Sundays.
Yeah, yeah.
Um that that was my only concern because I look at the prohibited guests, anyone with history of abuse, violence, trafficking, and or their influence of drugs or alcohol. Is there training for the staff to identify? This potential guest may be under the influence of drugs and alcohol. Do they have to send it to a breathalyzer? What what does that process still?
Yeah. Uh our staff are are thoroughly trained. And as a matter of fact, they they're trained to recognize uh situations where you may be in a trafficking situation. They 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 are trained to to recognize and to screen for domestic abuse. And and so we will continue to do that, you know. Uh we are, Cornerstone, we've always been um earmarked for best practices. And I don't think that that is going to change with the maternity.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Anybody else who else?
Thank you so much. Anybody else who wants to say?
One more question I have regarding your staffing. You're you're saying there's six caseworkers.
No, one.
Total, or one caseworker for six? So that would be. So your shift managers, so the director and the assistant case manager, they are included as far as the staff members to handle the duties of the women?
The center director, her entire responsibility is to manage the home. And to make sure that that the home is run well. And those other individuals are support staff for the directors and the director of maternity. The program director is the one who will help establish and implement the problematic steps of of the maternity home. And then you will have shift leaders who who are here to make sure that everything is running properly.
So how many staff would be on duty, say, at midnight?
We would probably have the shift leader who is there and, yes.
Just one shift leader then?
Yes.
With the possibility of there being six adults and two children per possibly? Okay, I'm just asking because we have group homes that do kind of the same where there's only one person. You you go there at midnight, two o'clock in the morning, and especially for us, we respond to a fire alarm. And we have one staff member that can actually provide help. And it's like, well, we kind of need to know what's going to be there.
Yeah.
Currently, it's one staff member. We, you know, I'm thinking about interns as well. And so hoping that, you know, airport or board interns that affect the children. But currently, it would be one staff member, the the clients, the residents who are there and their children are expected to be seated. And, yeah, so they will, they will stay in their rooms. That's where we need to be.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question. A woman goes into labor. Are you going to be calling nine-one-one or is that shift worker expected to take that person to the to the hospital? Therefore, leaving no no shift worker at the at the at the facility?
They will work with the dual staff that currently works at Cornerstone to develop a birth plan. And in a baby's birthing plan that it will include what what is going to be involved. And here are the steps, who who's going to do transport, what support people. And generally, most women will have support person that they have delegated to go be with them outside of the dual support staff.
So that could be like a parent or good friend or somebody who they're going to call. They go into labor at one o'clock in the morning, you know, and and it's coming fast. They're going to call that person, that person's going to come and either meet them at the hospital or come pick them up and take them?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that at no time would the facility be on staff. I'm familiar with a maternity home in another community and that has happened where in the middle of the, particularly the middle of the night, it always happens in the middle of the night, that someone, you know, goes into labor and they can't get anybody and, you know, they take the woman to the to the nearest hospital and there's nobody at the at the home for could be twenty minutes, it could be five hours.
I think just like maybe center director, my staff will call me if there's.
Okay. So it's all those other duties as assigned, right?
So, you know, I've gotten calls from our security company. The fact that our security alarm went off at Cornerstone, who do you think went out?
I got you.
I have a follow-up question. So like midnight hopefully is not peak hours. So let's look at like what would be, you know, let's call them business hours, so to speak, right? Like that nine to five timeframe. What would the average number of staff that would be on site at that point in time be?
It would be anywhere from four to three, three to four staff. The center director will be there. Then you'll have a receptionist who's there. And and more likely, it's going to be one of the, either the program director or the case manager. So or both. It just depends on what day you stay aside. But there won't be during regular business hours, one staff person.
Yeah, and so I apologize if it was in the plan and I missed it. What would, what are the visiting hours?
The visiting hours generally will cut off at probably around six to seven P M. So and there will be a downtime every every day. This, this is a time that people are expected to be down, meaning that you begin to retire for for the night.
Thank you.
I I had a flip. She said during peak hours, I want to go back to the midnight hour. Is there a way that like the fire department can have some kind of a safety training? Like, like I know with the schools, the the schools have to go to certain designated areas so you can do a head count. I mean, if you had eighteen people at full capacity, um, you know, midnight, there's going to be chaos and only one person responsible. Is there some kind of safety plan that can be worked out or put together to somewhat mitigate some of the craziness?
Part of the fire, uh, annual fire inspection, there is a required fire drill that will entail the fire department. We will go and we will witness the actual drill. And the the people will actually go to their designated area. The staff member will then do a head count. And kind of obviously, you know, we have to make sure that we know, the staff knows that we'll pick a place. It's like, okay, well, here's a safe place. So we're going to go, everybody's going to go here now. One of the things that I we've never been through is one of these drills where you have infant children. So that could present a little bit of a problem with only one staff member at midnight. Because like I say, these these things don't happen, you know, at noon. They they always happen at one, two o'clock in the morning and and then, you know, everybody's trying to figure out what to do. So how, my question would be, how quickly is follow-up staff available? And generally, response time?
We we don't know if you have a gap.
Well, no, I I did, the reason I'm asking is because these things like to say, you know, we we waited thirty minutes for somebody to show up. And thirty minutes is a long, long time for to people to be waiting. And we have to think about, okay, where do we shelter these people? Because these people can't be out in a snowstorm.
Well, our, we have a very good relationship with the fire department. Our operations manager is right on it. And and so developing and implementing with with our current staff in in Aliria practice drills in regards to to fire, even weather drills that we will do because, you know, we have a tornado season. And so I, you know, I I welcome the fire department to come in and and to some of these practice drills with with the staff. And so we 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 have executed a a excellent safety plan at Aliria, you know, for our campus. And I know that Jackie will do the same thing here in the maternity.
I have a follow-up question in this vein is that would it be feasible for you with your six staff and the core volunteers to implement an on-call program so that there is someone rotating on call at night that's ready to respond quickly so that it's not, and they're going to have emergencies, not.
Absolutely.
Calling too much people?
No, absolutely.
Could you give us a little bit of the directors? It sounds like you've already made your choice. Am I correct? Pardon?
In regards to what?
You're you're director of the home. You you guys have already made your choice.
No, I haven't chosen a director.
Well, you just said Jackie.
Jackie is our operations manager, facility manager, to make sure that all of our properties, you know, are up to code. They they, you know, we do our repairs, we do the training for for all the safety issues. We're we're coming up on winter. We do a a in-service training for staff on, you know, you know, when they come, you know, into the facility. We have to make sure that you don't have slippery shoes on, so and so forth. You know, make sure that the the longways are are cleared off and, you know, so we will go through that training as well. So there is more than adequate training for our staff with with safety issues.
So what experience are you guys looking for in the background of your directors?
A person who has experience in in the housing community, individual who has case management experience. And, yeah, so we're we're looking for someone who has a bachelor's degree in either nonprofit management or in social work, so we do better employees.
Lot of great questions. Thank you very much for the answers, Ms. Carver-Harris. Uh, right now, we're going to open up to public comment. Uh, if anyone would like to speak, please come to the podium to state your name. Uh, we will give you three minutes for your comments and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bill Romano. I basically live across the street from the place. I have a few questions. Is the parish going to give up after the county building?
It doesn't go to the county. They're not.
Who's going to maintain it?
It will still be owned by the diocese. Cornerstone. County has nothing to do with this.
Cornerstone's a private nonprofit. So they're not affiliated with the county, so Cornerstone would be responsible. I'm assuming under a lease arrangement between the church and Cornerstone to maintain the property inside and outside would be my guess.
Okay. So there are going to be renovations, cost of renovations on this.
Yes, we do.
And you said that there could be possibly up to two kids per pregnant woman?
It depends. I I don't know that until residents are clear. There will be limits to the amount of children that can be given down to the mother.
The other thing is, are they going to build a playground for kids outside?
We plan to. And it will be coincidental.
So they could be in the research.
Um, with kids up to five years old?
I'm just throwing it out because I have a crush.
They, most of the children will be under five years old and so, you know, I would think that the joy level for kids out there playing would be catching. It's not a school playground.
Okay, thank you so much.
Just reiterate that the maximum residency that they can have is a total of eighteen. That is with the mother and children.
That gets about, I have a lot of kids who are five or so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Well, I have a couple of questions. A lot of them were answered as we were going through, but can you just, you say again, the issue with domestic violence? Did you say that if they were involved in a domestic violence situation that they could not? We we don't expect to house participants who are currently in a domestic situation, domestic violence situation. So we'll screen them. Some women may have had domestic abuse from the past. But, you know, if there's a current domestic abuse situation, they are not. What will the person's implications about?
Okay, and are you going to have specific days for visitation or is it just going to be every day?
There will be specific structured weeks.
He answered the, he asked the question about the kids. I was concerned that they would. What qualifications does the caseworker have?
It should mostly be a living, a individual who has case management experience. You know, we currently have some of community health workers that are trained by Lorraine County Public Health. They go to a eight-week training program to learn how to do case management. Yeah, or some with a social services factor.
And then, um, will the fire department and police department at minimum have some type of copy of your procedures?
Well, initially, I've given them a copy. Realizing that when there's going to be some revisions because we have not, you know, building a safety plan, we don't have the law system in place that we're going to have in place. So we'll have to revise that. The sprinkler system is going to be replaced. We'll have to to revise the safety plan and stuff. So once the building is totally renovated, we're able then to revise our safety plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mike Sancho, I'm also a pastor. I think your experience, you're standing, you're going to be standing three shifts a day, seven days a week. And you said you're six employees. That's, do you have like volunteers coming in to assist beyond that?
Yes, we'll have four volunteers that do specific roles.
And we've got multi-language, multi-language acceptance members?
Yeah, we we currently have an anti-language staff. People within Cornerstone's employee base. And so, yes, we're we're going to to look to hire individuals if they're multi-language. We'll utilize them. If not, there are so many tools out there, software that staff have used and and continue to use. Because we're we're not going to have an employee to take those all language shirts. Yeah, so we'll we'll use whatever software is available and for them to talk to the director.
Anyone else?
I'm Linda Romano. Whose decision is it? Is or is it already going to be the home? Or is you have guys have to make a decision whether or not they can go in?
Yeah, it it would be voted on.
It would be voted on by everybody in the community?
Right here, the commission, yes, ma'am.
Is there an age on the child that can stay with the mother?
Teenagers, yeah. Currently, we're seeing children that are five and, okay, so it's going to be a teenager. It can be a teenager.
Does the church still own the property? Or is it the church owned? So still owned by the church?
I can clarify that. It's actually owned by the bishop.
Okay. But it's still owned by them?
And this would be a lease arrangement, a lease arrangement between Cornerstone and actual diocese. But it would be the wholesale.
And that lease is for how long? That's to be.
We still have.
But it'd be at least for up to years if they can stay there for eighteen months.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right.
All right, uh well, thank you, everyone uh who had came or have come in attendance and have participated. Uh the commission will now call a separate meeting on November third at seven P M to consider the approval or denial of the permit uh in codified ordinance one-one-six-five-oh-three. And uh that is it. Anything else to add?
Am I reading this?
Yes, please.
Okay, so in order for the planning commission to consider the conditional use permit, according to codified ordinance eleven-sixty-five-oh-three D, in approving a conditional use permit, the planning commission with due regard to the nature and state of all adjacent structures and uses in the district within which saying is located shall make written findings that the following are fulfilled. One, the use requested is listed among the conditional uses in the district for which application is made or is similar in character to those listed in that district. Two, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the surrounding or adjoining districts nor adversely affect the safety, health, or welfare of the community or of the immediate neighbors of the property. Three, the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. Four, the requested use will be in conformity with the land use plan envisioned for the village. Five, adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, sanitation, or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Six, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize the traffic congestion in the public streets. And seven, that the conditional use shall in other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and preserve the purpose and intent of this zoning ordinance. If the planning commission approves a conditional use, there is a fifteen-day waiting period before a permit can be issued. During this time, appeals may be filed with the fiscal officer who will schedule the matter for the next village council meeting. No permit will be granted until any appeal is resolved. If the planning commission denies a conditional use application, the applicant also has fifteen days to appeal to the village council via the fiscal officer. If no appeal is filed, the decision is final. The planning commission has the authority to modify or waive standards if it finds the project aligns with the chapter's intent, the village's vision, and does not harm public health, safety, or welfare.
Thank you so much for everybody to attend and uh we are adjourned.
Cynthia, could you send me a copy of your PowerPoint? Thank you.